On August 16, 2022 to order at 3:07 PM. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We recognize we provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary, the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation. Staff will distribute these to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group of ten or more individuals present, please have those persons stand at the beginning of your comments, and you will be given 10 minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting 10 minutes to speak, you're forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate translation services. While the public discourse is very important to council, we have to maintain order and meetings so that all persons may be heard and city business may be conducted. So if directed by me, the charge in an arm shall remove from the council any person who, while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting, makes impersonal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, becomes boisterous, or makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, claps hands, stomps feet, whistles, yells, or makes similar demonstrations. When called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I have one card for the work session, and that is from Randy Aylman.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Randy Aylman, a retired Waco police commander with 39 years of full-time service. I live in District Five in Waco, by the way. I'm here to talk about the city giving a much-needed cost of living adjustment of COLA to its own retirees. I've been retired for a lack of a COLA now for several years. I am making this appearance on my own accord, just like my friend and retired officer Phil Baumann did a few short weeks ago. The Texas Municipal Retirement System, or TMRS, shows that the city of Waco has 1,154 annuities. Eligible retirees haven't been given a COLA increase since January of 2014. This coming January will be nine years since the city's last given of a cost of living adjustment, which would be the largest gap ever in the past. As you know, we've all been dealing with the effects of inflation, and this really has caused it to become an urgent matter to consider approving a cost of living adjustment for the city's retirees. Using historical data from the Consumer Price Index for urban areas, or CPIU, and estimating those CPI rates ahead of January of 2024, by that time, our retirees' purchasing power over that 10-year period could decline by 35 to 40 percent. That should not be allowed to happen, as that would be devastating to all city retirees. As part of my research, I looked at page 67 of this year's online budget document. The city appears, based on what I've seen, to be growing its revenues and is projected to have noticeable increases in the unassigned balance in its general fund. Each of the city's retirees, over the years they serve, served the city well and made our city a better place for its citizens. It's reasonable for those retirees to receive a pay raise on a regular basis in order to adequately provide for their families. Many city retirees, no doubt, live inside the Waco city limits and are in fact represented by the council. I came today to publicly ask for the council's support in making a cost of living adjustment, or COLA, a reality during the upcoming fiscal year. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on any work session item? If not, we will recess the regular session and convene to work session with a report from the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor.
Sorry. Thanks, Mayor and council. Welcome to today's session. I don't have any changes on the agenda today. I do have a brief update I want to provide on water conservation and lake level. As you all are well aware, it's dropped below 65 percent capacity at Lake Waco, continues to decline as expected due to ongoing draws from the lake for our usage as well as evaporation. But I did yesterday, thanks to the conservation efforts by our local businesses and residents, we are, we're saving about 10 percent water use in the last couple of weeks, thanks to those conservation measures, compared to pre-drought restriction levels. So with that in mind, I have modified the times for watering. Previously, we had stopped watering at 6:00 AM for our residents, and they're going to be able to water until 8:00 AM now, giving them a little more time to water in daylight instead of at night or in the darkness of the early morning hours. We hope that'll be a welcome change for our residents. Additionally, we're providing some press release information about a clarification that those residents that have drip irrigation systems can use those any day of the week, not just on their assigned watering days, and that hand-watering is allowed every day of the week as well. So please, if you're able, share that information with your local residents, and we'll be doing the same thing through our communications efforts.
Thanks for being thoughtful about that, city manager. I think that it is representative of our approach to this, which is trying to conserve water in very high levels of drought, but at the same time, be thoughtful and mindful of our residents. So I appreciate your approach to this today and thus far.
Thanks, Mayor. We'll, we'll keep monitoring and be hoping for some rain later in the fall. I did have an organizational update or recognition of employees I wanted to share, really just a thank you to quite a few different groups that participated in a, in a big project, and that's the large acquisition of our fire apparatus. In fact, it was the largest acquisition of fire trucks that we've ever had in our city's history, and that involved our fire team, finance, legal, purchasing. And so I'm excited to, you know, to move the ball on this. Our team has moved the ball on this, and one key stat to always keep in mind is with these new seven fire trucks, we took our average age of frontline equipment from 19 years to about six years old. And that's a huge move for a city like us that has so many fire trucks. And wanted to show a brief video. If the team has it queued up, we'll, we'll watch a video of those trucks.
Come on. Come on.
Yeah, so huge thanks to our communications and marketing team for putting that video together. It's a, it's definitely a moment of pride for our community, says a lot about how we value our residents, but also how we value those firefighters that are on the front lines every day, and certainly represents a lot of hard work and coordination and a significant investment by this council. So thank you all for letting me highlight that.
Very cool.
That's awesome.
In terms of informal reports today, I have three on the agenda. We're kind of feast or famine on these, but three today. IR 543 is the first one. It describes the rollout and funding levels of our small business support program. I briefly spoke at last council meeting about these programs. The informal report that Galen Price put together does further document what we're doing here, which is combining our federal American Rescue Plan dollars with resources from tax increment financing zone one and four, as well as some excess sales tax revenue to create a program that will include more than $5 million in funding to support small businesses. That's about six times what we spent during COVID, during that brief run of small business support that we had during COVID. So this is a sizable program for us to take on. We'll start with a pilot program in East Waco later in the month, actually in August, and wider availability will come in the months to follow. We are proposing to partner with local organizations, local nonprofits that are in the economic development game to help us get these dollars out and dispersed efficiently. That would include the Central Texas African-American Chamber, Central Texas Hispanic Chamber, as well as Grassroots Waco. I just want to really appreciate the work of Galen Price and the community services team for taking on a large program, and certainly look forward to your input on it as well.
City manager, I also want to echo your gratitude for staff and your intuitiveness in finding, you know, finding these dollars mainly for the assistance in small businesses that are affected by our construction. Our growth is, is a wonderful, wonderful process. However, there are lots of unintended consequences that come with that, because when you created your business or you started your business, you had no idea that there was going to be a period of months where people would have to really, really want to be there, to get there. And, you know, we, we beg the question of city management, were there cities who were doing things to assist those businesses, and the challenge was issued and accepted? And I appreciate all of the staff in the city management office and departments that are directly involved in finding an answer, in finding a solution, because those businesses are still our life's blood. Those sales taxes feed us and allow us to grow and do and develop and construct more roads and things. But it is, it is at a cost to them, and I thank you for finding a way to acknowledge that cost and be a part of a solution, because we can talk about the problems all day, but without working to find a solution, we are quarterback, armchair quarterbacking, and that's, that's garbage. So I appreciate you taking time to do that and finding an effort to assist our businesses and our communities, especially those small businesses and independently owned businesses who have no other choices but what they do day to day.
That's right. To add some additional commentary to the program that council members are talking about, it's called the Barriers to Success Program, and it's specifically constructed to help businesses along Elm Avenue, Dutton Avenue, as well as Washington Avenue that have faced really long-term construction projects. And this will give that, those businesses a leg up to get back into business as those projects wrap up.
Holmes here. I just want to also comment on the Small Business Support Program. Galen Price, I appreciate, where is he?
He's there. Left.
There he is, Galen. I appreciate you pulling this together. I know this is, the primary funding source is the American Rescue Plan Grant Program. We're also, as City Manager Ford said, we're combining in some TIV funds and a sliver of excess sales tax related to the Barriers to Success Program. But I love the combination here. It's critical mass. It's $5 million for us to, to invest into small businesses. I want to also note that this is sort of phase two of a program that was really hatched back in the, in the throes of the pandemic when we, when Assistant City Manager Deidre Emerson and Bradley and I kind of got together, and what are we going to, and back then, Mayor Dever, we created this COVID task force of business economic recovery, and we were trying to think of the best ways we could solve problems as businesses were having to close down. And we, we brought in a lot of leadership in, in Waco on that one. The Greater Waker Chamber, Central Texas African-American Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, Waco Business League, Startup Waco, and we had meetings every week on how to, on how to tackle small business problems and issues at the time. And it was such, the communication there was so fulfilling, and it was an honor for me to chair that task force. And to see it kind of grow, and I think, I don't know if you remember the day we spent in one afternoon on drawing up on the board how this was going to work and how we were going to service these, these funds, but we were able to get $800,000 together, I think, through the county and the city, and I think Galen found the money somewhere. But it was rewarding. It was, it was, and I'm glad to see it kind of grow into something a little more sophisticated with, with some real legs under it. But just in the data there on page 12, 236 businesses helped and the retention of 567 jobs. So I'm very excited and happy to see this move into phase two and a bigger program. So thanks to staff.
Thanks, council member. Who, Deidre and I could never forget our time spent on the whiteboard.
A lot of different colors on that whiteboard.
Councilmember Holmes brought a whole pack of markers, six different colors.
The subtleties of that process.
I learned a lot that day. I cannot forget. Our second informal report today is, oh, sorry, Mayor.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to say, you know, I think small business support is the heart of our community, and I think this has been a priority of our council for a long time to diversify our economic development strategies by figuring out how to support small businesses. So I do think that this is a good step, positive step in that direction.
Thank you. Our second IR is informal report 544. It's an update on our stormwater policy and design criteria. We've drafted this to make the council aware of proposed changes and certainly documenting the next steps around those changes. Some highlights, we've, this is the first time we are attempting to address lot-to-lot drainage and the transfer of stormwater across watersheds. And in fact, a lot, a lot of our policy work that's taken place since 2017 on stormwater is updating pieces of our regulations that are more than five decades old. It was time. We do, obviously, we're impacting developers and contractors in this approach. Some increase costs, but certainly also some opportunities to create flexibility for cost savings to development, including for the first time allowing PVC pipe as a stormwater conveyance method, flexibility in channel design with criteria towards natural as well as engineered and hybrid channels. Our next steps here, we're, have released the guidelines to developers and builders and contractors and engineers, soliciting comments and compiling those, and certainly be hosting workshops as necessary as we get feedback from that important stakeholder community, and anticipate bringing in a final policy and design to the council in the second quarter of fiscal year 23, which to the layman is January to March of 2023.
I just have one quick comment on this, Bradley. It makes, I'm very happy with how the communication process has worked here, because I know that we're updating, as you said, policy from 1959. That's almost as old as me, you know? That's, that's some old policy there. And design standards from 2013, and the effect of these changes actually are reducing costs to developers, which, and improving constructability. So I applaud the communication. I think Clint, you guys meet monthly with the, with the developers, and I think this is the product of that kind of communication, and updating policy and design standards that need to be updated and ultimately become cost-effective and efficient. So great work.
We'll look forward to communicating along the way with the, with the council as well. Thanks, council member. The informal report 545 similarly is an update on proposed street design criteria and want to make the council aware of changes that we've proposed, which we'll be making available as well to the development community after this briefing. Some highlights, we are looking to modify the minimum pavement width on local streets from 28 feet to 30 feet. There's some imagery in the informal report that shows the, the reason we're doing that is as you have two cars, you know, a car on each side of the street parked, it's difficult at times for large apparatus such as fire trucks or solid waste vehicles to maneuver past that environment. We're not proposing to increase the right-of-way dedication required from developers, just the width of the actual pavement by two feet. Additionally, something that I think's been mentioned by council members before relates to adding sidewalks on local streets as well as part of new development. So that is also proposed in the street design criteria. Following today's meeting, we'll take the similar approach as the IR before, in that we'll release the information to developers and builders and contractors, solicit and compile their comments, conduct one-on-one workshops or group workshops as needed, and bring you a final policy and design discussion in the first quarter of next year, 2023. On public hearings today, we have two of them. Public hearing 553 will be covered by Roger Glick here in a few minutes in the work session regarding changes to our municipal drainage ordinance, and then 554 to 561 will be covered after that by Clint Peters regarding planning items. Highlights on the agenda, I have a, well, unfortunately for you all, I've got four. But that just shows the great work we're doing, right? First one's resolution 562. It sets the tax rate and schedule process, and I wanted to make a note on 562 in particular that the rate that is listed, 76,472, is the maximum rate that we're listing. And if the council chose, it could come down from that rate, would not be able to go higher than that rate. And that is the rate that I proposed in the city manager's proposed budget, so you're probably recognizing those numbers already. We would have opportunities for public hearing, of course, on September 6th, and you'll hear more about next steps on the budget here in a few minutes from Nick Sarpe during the work session. On resolution.
Bradley, if, for, so commentary on this resolution, would it be more fitting to talk in the context of the work session?
I think so. We have a slide in the work session that speaks to property tax and, and also can give some guidance on procedurally, if there's a, a desire to amend even the resolution for tonight, the rate suggested on the resolution tonight, there'll be an opportunity for that.
Okay. Thank you.
To offer Nick a few moments to prepare for the question that I will ask as we've been brought to, you know, several, by multiple people have been brought to the attention of the cost of living adjustment for our retirees. I think it's something that we should include in the discussion and conversation as we carry on with our budget workings, so. Day of five minutes, Nick. Yay.
Well, luckily, we have the, the two people most knowledgeable about that issue.
Right there and right there.
Are gonna be at the, be right at the table here in a few minutes.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
We'll see if they're able to have a educated conversation on that today, or if we may need to wait till next week.
No worries.
I see them talking, so we'll, we'll see what they come up with. The, the next resolution I wanted to highlight is 564. It's the Chapter 380 agreement between the city and Texas State Technical College and the TSTC Foundation. City Attorney Richie and I are excited to bring this one forward. It would result in the creation of a new industrial training center operated by TSTC to be located down in the industrial district near, you know, what is about 20,000 jobs that we have, that we have in our region. This facility was discussed in some detail at your February 15th work session. The agreement provides a long-term funding arrangement from the city. We'd be contributing $620,000 annually for 20 years, as long as TSTC constructed and operated a training facility at that location. The county is proposing a similar level of funding. They're doing it a little differently. They're providing a cash contribution upfront, but the, the dollars are equivalent to our contribution that we make over 20 years, based on a net present value. TSTC's commitment to the project, of course, is to support the site's acquisition as well as constructing and funding the program's operation. If all goes well, the agreement states that the facility would be underway from a construction standpoint in October of 2023 and completed by October of 2025, and certainly would be supporting the training of lots of incumbent workers that are looking to upskill themselves. So I'm excited to present this resolution to you.
Jennifer and Bradley, I know you all have worked really hard to get the right structure for this in place, and I really appreciate each of your efforts to do this. Excited to partner with McLennan County and TSTC and other organizations like our Chambers of Commerce and Prosper Waco. I know I've had seats at the table on this initiative as well, and I think this is a mission-critical goal of our community to create greater pathways for financial security and upskilling our workforce, incumbent and underemployed, through making sure that there is accessible training to good-paying jobs in this community is certainly going to achieve that. So I'm really excited to see our residents be able to benefit from accessible training that is going to allow them to go make more monies for their family and live financially secure lives.
I'll just echo the mayor on that. So much appreciate, I know the staff did a lot of work on pulling this together with two other partners, TSTC and the Commissioners Court, the county, and I love it to see when a good plan comes together, because this is workforce, technical training and workforce and upskilling, as the mayor mentioned, that we desperately need as we attract new businesses to Central Texas, and I think this fits a lot of, checks a lot of boxes. Thanks.
Yeah, a hearty here here on District Three as well. This is a great, great program. Thanks to staff, thanks to the mayor and council, representatives from industry. This is the workforce side of economic development, connecting our people to the jobs that we're bringing in and incentivizing, and so this is very good work.
I certainly agree with my colleagues, and I think this is something that we're all excited about, and hopefully we get this off the ground and going and see our people really get and take advantage of this process and this education for them, knowing full well that city and county is totally behind this project.
Hauron.
The next one I wanted to highlight was Resolution 565. This involves the acquisition of property in East Waco. Why don't you click me forward one? I want to show the, the property in question. It's everything that's outlined in blue, kind of bluish-purple on your screen here. This is a site that I refer to as the slabs. Those that have driven down Taylor a few years ago, you know it was covered with concrete slabs for a number of years. They've since been removed thanks to our work with the tax increment financing zone. It's now dirt and grass. We are proposing for the city to acquire the property in blue. It adjoins our properties that already exist in red, including the home of East Waco Library there under the, as you're looking on the map in red. It's our intentions, we're acquiring this from city center Waco. It's our intentions to recruit a mixed-use, mixed-income developer later in 2022 and further into our housing goals as well as goals for East Waco. During, one of the reasons I'm highlighting this is during the property and title search, our attorney, Bree Daniels, came across a deed restriction on the property that I thought helps us visualize our past or what's in our rearview mirror. This is a deed restriction from 1930 and certainly no longer valid, thanks to the Constitution and fair housing law and case law. This is an invalid provision. But I wanted to highlight it and let it sink for a minute as to what is in our rearview mirror, and it gives life and energy, I feel like, to the work we're doing in equity and equitable economic development. City staff will be working through the practices allowed by the Texas Property Code to remove this deed restriction from the property, and I suspect that down the road, as we recruit a developer, we'll find opportunities to tell the story about what the past was and how we've moved on from it. tell the story about what the past was and how we've moved on from it.
With the work that we've been doing in, all across the city and multiple organizations with the redlining maps, with this, understand that as we sit in this moment and are about to create new neighborhoods, potentially and probably for the people who were restricted from living here, is a moment to think about, semicolon, that that was one generation ago.
Not too long ago.
I mean, that's, that's, that's one family removed ago. And that's powerful, and it is necessary. It is still necessary that we do the work and intentionally do the work that is dedicated to eradicating this mindset. And I am especially proud of our staff and this council, the previous council, and their commitment to this work, because it is oftentimes unpopular, not necessarily because people don't want to do it, it's just uncomfortable. Racism has never been a comfortable conversation to have, and it takes courage to do what we live in daily. However, you know, I appreciate walking this line and doing this work with courageous people. Everybody's not with us, but that's all right, there's more of us. And so, I appreciate this work and what we do, and what we have done, are doing, will do.
I totally agree with my council member. My family lived there in East Waco on Spring Cherry and Tyler and Mann Street. I don't even know if Mann Street is still there or not.
It is. It's on one side, yes.
And did not realize that this was there.
Stone's throw.
But I'm proud of the staff for bringing this forward and showing it to us, so that people can see and understand what people in our past generations have gone through and still continue to go through at still, at some point in time. Some of this is still out there, but we're trying to work hard to eliminate that mindset. And this council and this staff, I'm proud of for understanding that this is something that this city of Waco will not tolerate any longer.
I think that, I think the gravity of this work is significant, and I think the future of East Waco, for the people of East Waco, is very bright. And I think that that's in large part because of the strategic work of this council and our city staff. And assembling property, you know, it's particularly a decent-sized property to have a meaningful impact for neighborhood is, is kind of challenging work. I mean, it takes time of City Center Waco, it takes time of our city staff, and will continue to take time as we explore how to develop this in a thoughtful, positive, equitable way. But it's gonna have ROI's in very meaningful ways, meaningful impact to the lives of the people who live in this neighborhood, who will live in this neighborhood. And it's also gonna be a very positive impact, I think, not only for the neighborhood of East Waco, but our city as a whole. And so, it's very worthwhile work, although it's sometimes challenging and sometimes cumbersome to take on assembling properties that have a bunch of slabs on them, that could just be easy, the market's hot, and let a private developer go in there and see what happens. But instead, this staff and this council has worked really strategically, and I can't wait to see the groundbreaking for what is gonna be on this side. I can't wait to see the ribbon-cutting for what will come to be here. And I know it's going to be very positive for the people that are currently living in East Waco, and that's going to be as a result of the thoughtfulness of this team and our community. And when I say this team, it's not just council, it's not just council and staff, it is neighborhoods, neighbors, residents, neighborhood associations. We're all on the same team. And because of our thoughtful work together, we're gonna see some good outcomes.
Thanks, council, for those comments. Last resolution I wanted to highlight is 575. It relates to one of the most significant action items that you'll recall from our winter storm after-action report, and it relates to the acquisition of large-scale generators at our water and wastewater treatment plants. The council's well familiar at how difficult that week was to balance the public infrastructure challenges when we did not have reliable electricity. This item attempts to address that by providing $3.475 million of funding to come in southern plains for the acquisition of five emergency backup generators. Three will be placed at Riverside Water Treatment Plant, and the remaining two will be at Central Wastewater Treatment Plant. We'll come back in the future for another contract that involves the installation side of this acquisition. Staff anticipates that these backup generators for Riverside and the wastewater treatment plant will be in place by the fall of 2024, and they'll provide the ability to treat up to 30 million gallons a day of water and approximately 45 million gallons a day of wastewater, which will prevent us from having overflows into the Brazos River of wastewater. That's kind of important. And the generators will provide us sufficient power for as long as diesel fuel is available during an emergency. I'm excited to be presenting that resolution to you as well this evening. Mayor, that concludes my report.
A couple resolutions I wanted to touch on. One of them is just a quick attaboy on 569, where the fire department looked at one of our Pierce fire engines. And as we saw at the front of the, at the first of the deal, those are nice, big, shiny, million-dollar fire engines, and they keep these things in great repair. And just in a spirit of efficiency, instead of, there was one that had an engine that was having some issues, and instead of buying the new one, we went and spent $60,000 and fixed up the existing one. So that kind of discipline and efficiency, I applaud every time I see it, and I don't want it to go by without saying something. The other thing, I just want to quick hit on 576, that talks about our fellow council member, Andre Bearfield, and her role, not only on a city level, but on a national level. She is a great asset to this council and integral to what we've done here in the last few years. And also, in addition to being a great voice in Waco, she's a great national voice, too, and a great ambassador for the city of Waco. So I'm happy that we're endorsing her for the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities. Congratulations, AJ.
And on behalf of the council, I'm sure we all appreciate you living out of a hotel room for a month as you attend all these conferences. God bless.
Congratulations, council member. But not a living a whole month in a hotel room.
Keeping up with Andrea's travel schedule, summer was something I didn't even attempt to do. But I'll echo what other council members have said. It's such an honor and privilege to get to serve with you as we do this work up here. I love hearing the innovative ideas that you bring back from NLC, and I also know that you are representing our city so well, and I'm so thankful for your role in this great organization. And again, just an honor to see you excel here in this community.
Thank you. Thanks, Cross. I appreciate you all. The, the work that we do on this level is easy, because we don't have to invent the wheel every time. And organizations like Texas Municipal League, organizations like National League of Cities, allow us to work with our colleagues, big and small cities, to see what they're doing and what works. And when we see something that works, it's the case mentality, we copy and steal everything. And so, hopefully, I will work, be selected and work as hard and as diligently as Council Member Canard did when he served on the National League of Cities Board, former Council Member Canard.
The consent agenda includes Resolutions 2022, 562 through 576. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda?
Perhaps that 562, not remove, but separate.
And I believe 566 has been pulled. So consent agenda includes Resolutions 562 through 576, with the exceptions of 562 and 566. The next item on the agenda are work session items, 2022, 546 through 549. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
All right. Our first work session, it's a damn fine presentation.
Come on now! Come on now!
Start the dam, Juice! No, we've had a great presentation on the Lake Brazos Dam, and I'm excited to bring it forward. There is an associated item on your business session agenda, Resolution 573. It awards a contract to McMillan LLC for the erosion project. And all in with the contract and contingency, it's a nine-and-a-half-million-dollar expenditure. So Lisa, our Director of Water Utilities, Lisa Tyers here, alongside representatives from Freezing Nichols, the design consultant of the project, to provide a presentation that includes the history of the dam and the work to be performed under this contract. Lisa, if you don't mind, will you introduce the Freezing Nichols team?
Sure. Good afternoon. I'm really pleased to have with me Victor Vesquez and Dr. Hyundai Gurkis. I've known Victor for a little bit, for like seven years at least, I think we figured out. And I believe in 2017, we brought this project to a council retreat to discuss about the embankment part of the labyrinth, Weir Dam, or the Lake Brazos Dam. So with that, Victor is a dam expert, and that is really what he is. He is a Freezing Nichols Principal and Water Resource Design Group Manager, responsible for managing resources for dam-related projects throughout Texas and the U.S. Southeast. His experience as a project manager includes the management of design and repair projects for dams and hydraulic structures. So one of the things that Victor has gotten to do is, when Puerto Rico was devastated by a hurricane, Victor went to go and assess the dams there, because there were several that were on the verge of collapsing. And so, he's that kind of dam expert. During his career, he has served as project manager and lead design engineer and field engineer on various types of dams and structures, including earthen embankments and concrete structures for municipalities, state and federal agencies, and river authorities. He was the engineer of record for the Lake Brazos Dam Labyrinth Spillway Project, and has continued to be involved in other evaluations of the dam since then. So Victor helps us with our dam safety inspections. Dr. Hyundai Gurkis is a geotechnical engineer and project manager in Freezing Nichols Water and Resources Design Group. Her background in advanced laboratory testing of soils and analysis of results, experimental testing and foundation design, dam stability calculation, slope stability analysis, seepage and settlement analysis, and other advanced geotechnical numerical modeling methods. Hyundai has also served as project manager on dam and levee rehabilitation projects for both municipal and federal clients. She is the engineer of record for the current Lake Brazos Dam Embankment Project Repair. So I guess I have always thought of them as being really the dam experts. When we have any questions, this is who we call. And they've been great, great partners for us to work with through the years. So with that, I'm gonna let Victor and Hyundai take this away, and give you all a brief history of our dam.
Thank you, Lisa, and I'd like to thank Lisa, Charlize, and Linda Dvorak for the support of the project from, you know, as soon as 2016 all the way to today. With that, this is the outline of the presentation. Like Lisa said, I want to cover the history of the dam a little bit, because it's all tied together on what hand is working on today, give you a reminder of the original project background and purpose, and how that still holds true to today, project, and then Hyundai will cover more of the specifics of the current project. So your dam, originally constructed in 1970, there were two main features to the project. There was the gate spillway with drum gates and the overflow embankment. This structure performed somewhat unsatisfactorily for several years, primarily because the gates corroded, and with time, they will drop and release the reservoir, so you guys will not have a town lake for several days in a row, and it was very difficult for the city to perform the repairs. As part of those failures, what happened with the dam as well was a whole developed downstream of the dam, so you guys also had a dam safety concern with the dam. This project then got modified in 1985. The gates were changed to crest gates with hydraulic ramps. That scar hole that you see that was there before, it got filled with concrete, and that extended the Stillon Basin to prevent this scour. And this is what the dam looks like back in the 80s, 80s. This is, again, pictures of the dam with the lake down, which you don't want to see this picture very often, because that means that you don't have a town lake. Here, you see the spillway, here the embankment, here is the current project that we're gonna talk about. The embankment is the structure that we have here, and this is what we call the left alley works. And I expand on this again, but here are just some pictures that illustrate what the dam looked like back in the early 2000s. So what were the problems with that dam? Obviously, costly repairs, even though you modified the gates, debris was still an issue with the dam. It would come over the gates, impact the hydraulic ramps, and again, you'll drop the lake. What this graph here illustrates is, normally, your normal pool lake level, it should be around 375. For 20-year-old history of that dam, you had three years of that lake that was below that lake level. So when we were visiting with the city at the time, these kind of were the major issues that we kind of focused the attention of the project to. Unreliable lake level, control gate operations, environmental impacts, and long-stability of the structure. So back in the early 2000s, we got the lot to work on this project, me personally. I cannot give the benefit of coming up with the labyrinth Weir concept, that was actually the Corps of Engineers who came up with the concept of the labyrinth Weir structure. At the time, their budget estimate for the project was $30 million, which the city did not have, and one of the asks from the city to us as the design engineers, we need this project, we want the labyrinth Weir, but we need to therefore have that cost. So that was a major challenge for us in the design team. But what you see here is the project goals then, improve lake lowerability, maintain the FEMA footprint that was established then, and very important for the city at the time, revitalize downtown. And you see the considerations, limit flood impacts, long-term maintenance, reduce that, environmental impacts, construction risks, which all come into construction costs, and underline all that is, but yeah, we want to do it for $50 million. So we prepared several plans and specs, bid the project. Unfortunately, on the first bid, we had to bid it twice, bids came in at $21 million. We had addressed all the city requests at the time, which included fixing some, you know, concerns with the stability of the embankment and adding hydraulic capacity for low-flow conditions with these rad alley works. The city could not afford the 20-million-plus project, so we rebid the project, eliminated these components of the project on either side, and what you see below is what got built. We did manage to add the rad alley works during construction, based on construction underruns, but we could not do the embankment repairs and the Stillon Basin that you see here. You see here some damage, and I explain with the next picture what that is. And this project ended up costing $60 million construction ruffle. During construction, working on the river is very dangerous, and you are subject to flooding. So yes, we were, I'll say, two or three months from finishing the whole project, and the Brazos, up to that point, the Brazos River was very dry, Texas was going through a drought in 2006, so no flooding. But we did get flooding eventually. We actually stopped work for about a month, but this impact on the flooding really was focused on what we had finished at the time, which was what we called the left labyrinth Weir. That resulted in concentrated flow, which ended up resulting in damage on the embankment. So what you see here today is the embankment condition, which was already precarious to begin with. After flooding, this is what resulted. We did, at the time, try to do some work on that, but due to insufficient funds, we couldn't move any of that. So the project kind of got parked on standby. I just wanted to highlight here, pictures illustrate just erosion dam on the actual embankment. You see, there is a sheet-pall section that was built, the whole structure was built when we rehabilit, well, when somebody else rehabilitated the dam in '85. Interesting note here, FM Young actually built this project, and he had a vision of actually generating hydro power as part of this project. That never came to fruition, but he did add a nice feature to the dam, because this allows lake lowering for maintenance. lake lowering for maintenance. So it is a valuable structure to the city and the function of the dam, however, is deteriorating with time. So in 2007, as we were wrapping up the labyrinth Weir, TCQ Dam Safety recommended monitoring the embankment until permanent repairs were implemented. That was in their inspection during construction. We inspected the dam for the city again in 2014, and the conditions at the site were deteriorating, but nothing has been done at the time. That's when the city started to re-engage us again to figure out what can we do with this structure. So we went in-
Just real quick, I apologize to interrupt.
Go ahead, feel free.
I realize you're telling the story, but just to get into the history of it, what we see there that looks like, I'll describe as zigzag, that's the Weir part of the dam, correct? Okay, and then we're talking, we're calling it on the far right of this photo, we're calling it the embankment, but that's also also called the earthen dam that's subject to erosion. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Just trying to get the basics of what this is.
So again, just make sure, so this is what we call the rad alley works, low-flow releases, the labyrinth Weir, main structure of the dam for normal flows of the river. Here is the embankment, and over here you have what we call the left alley works, which is another element of the dam. So you have multiple pieces or multiple structures that made up what we call the Lake Brazos Dam today. So the focus of the project today, which is what Hyundai's project, is really the embankment, which includes the left alley work, which is an underground tunnel that runs through the abutment of the dam. You have valves here, you have a slide gate here for maintenance, and then obviously here, what you see is the labyrinth Weir. So these are just more pictures that illustrate the condition of the structure when we started. So when we say sheet pile or training wall or sheet pile wall, is these steel sheets that you see here at the toe of the embankment? And this is what you see, some of the elements that are deteriorating today. So we did an evaluation of the structure when we did the labyrinth Weir. Stability was questionable then. We reevaluate everything for Lisa and team in 2006, 2007, and typically, you want a safety factor of 1.5. We don't know how that structure was built in 85. The joints were not really followed fully. New things were done, so when we start looking at different safety factors, it could be between 1.2 and 1.8, so below 1. However, the six, the structure is standing, but the point in, you have a risk here from failure if conditions are right. And that is what drives the need for rehabilitation of that structure. Waco today is a lot different than it was back when I did the Weir. Now you have the Baylor Stadium, more emphasis on trails and systems, more emphasis downtown. So risk failure of this embankment is even more important today than it was back in 2003 when we started the labyrinth. This dam impounds your oldest water right, and this dam is really what makes your town lake. And you cannot, you know, if you lose that embankment, you lose the lake, and the cost of repairing is significant if that's were to happen. So we evaluated different alternative for the city, trying to think outside the box and see can we do this for cheaper. So we look at, you know, C坎pile walls and other means to retain the embankment. In the end, working with Lisa and Charles and team, we settled back to what the original design of the repairs were in the original, you know, labyrinth Weir project, which is a steel basin, flat, slow flattening of the embankment, and just strengthening the whole structure. So what you see here today, just concepts back from 2017 of what the project was supposed to be, which again includes a steel basin, riprap abring at the toe, modifications for the actuators that operates the valve that used to control releases from the alley works, and improvements to entrance conditions at the tunnel for maintenance. And with that, well, I wanted to point out one last thing before I forget. As we were working with Charles on the scope of the current project, he ended up with a sinkhole at the toe of your dam. That's just condition, a condition that happened overnight. Charles was quick to respond to that, fix the sinkhole, but that's just a testament of the worst conditions that you face with embankment as it is today. And with that, I'll pass it on to Hyundai.
Thank you, Victor. And as Victor described, we are, this dam basically has a labyrinth, a right outlet works, left outlet works, and an earthen embankment. So it's quite a unique design, and we need to make sure all the pieces are working in collaboration with each other for a safe design. So the current project focuses on repairing the, mostly the left outlet works area, embankment, and improvements to the right outlet works. The green shaded area here show mostly the areas where we will be adding compacted earthen fill to repair the slope and bring it to a safe slope stability to meet the requirements, addition of additional rock group rap, and it will also have grout for scour protection. The red area here, which we'll talk in more detail in a bit, is the outlet basin. It's a reinforced concrete outlet basin that will protect the area from scour while helping the, improve the dam's stability. The yellow, smaller area right next to it is an actuator platform for improving the operations in this area. And on the upstream end, what we see here, the purple rectangle, is the de-watering system where we propose modifications for, again, an improved system. On the other side of the river is the right overlook, where it's currently not in use due to gates being removed previously, and we also propose to improve the safety of this area. So this is an existing condition, and you can see in a fall or a spring season, you can see that throughout the earthen embankment, so basically, earthen embankment means it's built using soils, mostly clay soils. And when the flood occurred, this shallow slide left these marks remaining, and you can see that we don't have a continuous 3D1 slope or 2D1 slope, a stable slope stability here yet. And another area is the left outlet works on the downstream end. You can see that the concrete slab that used to be here is more scouring in time, and the riprap, some of it has been replaced, and some of the debris is also observed. And in a more spring season, when the grass grows, it becomes lush and nice, but still you can see that abrupt changes in the slope shows the slope is not in a stable angle. So the proposed design includes the outlet basin, and what we're trying to achieve here is while protecting it from the scour in this area, we'll also use this outlet basin to improve the stability of the dam. First, because this area has been subjected to scour, the foundation needs to be repaired, and that will be achieved by addition of course aggregates and grata trip rap further downstream to prepare a stable foundation to build this reinforced concrete outlet basin. And to be able to design this structure, we ran computational fluid dynamics models, the colorful model you see here, which calculates the flow velocities, so we can ensure that the flow velocities are not in high velocities or the scour protection is adequate for these velocities. Here we see a section, so this is the earthen embankment we've been showing. It has a clay core and clay upstream and downstream shells. The darker shaded areas, both in both figures, show the addition of compacted earth fill that will be used to bring this slope to a stable angle. And this U-shaped structure is the reinforced concrete outlet basin. While it prevents this area from further scouring, it also supports the dam from the toe to make sure the factors of safeties are either equal or greater than the 1.5, which is recommended, required by the TCQ and recommended by Army Corps. So on the upstream end, we have a slide gate. This is the picture of the slide gate. In default condition, the gate is open, and you can see that the existing structure has been corroding. The way to operate the structure currently is to bring a crane on site and to lower the crane. And this here picture is taken from while we were inspecting the tunnel from inside. So the tunnel itself seemed to be have adequate structural integrity. However, when you close the gate, you can see that it's significantly seeping, so it is not necessarily adequate for preventing the water intrusion, we should say. And on the downstream side, the water that's in the tunnel is released through these outlet structures that are controlled by the actuators. However, the actuators throughout many high-water river levels have been submerged, so that resulted in malfunctioning of actuators, and there's no continuous power in this area. Again, because of the floods, power has been lost. What we're proposing to do in this area is, first of all, to use the existing structure, but make it stronger by addition of structural elements. And then we will remove the slide gate and build a bridge crane and stoplog system. And this whole system will be housed in a de-watering building. And above picture, this photo is actually a bathroom building from the parks. So we wanted to make sure the color, colors of this building is consistent with the other buildings in Waco, so it will have a Baylor green roof, and it will be a pre-engineered metal building to make it a lighter structure. It will have masonry veneer, and this building will have continuous power. So when the flood waters increase one foot above the slab, it will automatically shut the power to this building to make sure the electrical equipment doesn't get damaged. On the left outlet's work downstream side, we will take out those pipes to build this outlet works in this area, outlet basin in this area. And to be able to improve the operations, we will be raising the actuators. So that will be achieved by a steel platform here. It will be accessed through a gate, a gated climbing ladder. So the actuators will be raised above flood levels to make sure we reduce the submergence of these actuators and that they can function in a long time. On the right non-overflow section, this existing structure used to have the equipment that was used for operating the gated spillway, but since the gated spillway is replaced by a labyrinth, there's no use for these structures. This control room is hosting some electrical equipment, most of them are malfunctioning right now, and there's a crane here. However, as this structure remains here, it can attract some intruders, and we want to make sure we want to secure this area. So for that, the proposed design includes removal of all the non-functioning equipment in this area. A self-leveling concrete will be placed to make sure we have a clean, nice floor. New power lines, new skater system, new antenna system will be brought on site. There will be anti-climb fences to, for a secure area. There will be new light fixtures so it can be lit. And also, this whole area will have a water level transmitter. It will be transmitting to the city's control rooms through antenna. And that, I turn to Lisa.
So this is kind of a Gantt chart for the timeline for this project. This is very, very tentative because we don't have a project schedule yet, so we're kind of guessing at this. But we're hoping that we would have this project substantially completed by October of '23 with just some punchless cleanup work remaining after that. And with that, so Water Utility Staff is recommending awarding the Lake Brazos Dam improvement, construction contract to McMillan LLC for nine, over a little over $9 million and adding a contingency of about $320,000, $321,000. And that is our recommendation. I would say two things that people don't realize is that with the old, older dam, we put city staff at risk every time we had to go back in there and repair it. That picture of those guys in rain jackets, it was dangerous. And I was here when that was going on. I believe Mrs. Rodriguez was here when it was going on. It was dangerous. We would never do that nowadays, and we, that labyrinth Weir protects us from having to do that. So that was a great move to go to that dam. The other thing is that when we had that sinkhole, Charles Leest, who is the deputy director and the, and an engineer in my department, he did not sleep that night because he was so worried we were going to lose the earthen bank. And if we lost it, it would be probably at least a year or more before we could have something established back there to have Lake Brazos. And that's what makes this project so important for us, not to wait till we have a catastrophic failure.
Holmes here, I'll come on in. Lisa, thank you for the presentation. Dr. Harris, thank you. Mr. Vascas, thank you. Yeah, I love the history part of it because there's not many of us in this room. Alicia, you and Jed, I know you probably remember this, and maybe, maybe Andrea, her council member, Bearfield, you might remember, but that first 1970 cylinder contraption that we had with the hydraulics and the hoses and all that, it was not a good, it did not work. And then we replaced that with that drum and the something else that did, who would have thought that putting hoses and hydraulic cylinders underwater in sand would, would wear out, you know? But anyway, and Alice, I'll give you credit for, in 2005, I think you were on council and funded this labyrinth Weir design and the dam, which has, I think, held up pretty well. It's a beautiful, I know the public can't go down there and see it, but as a council member, I've been able to go look at it when we're removing some of the debris from it. It's actually a very beautiful waterfall kind of arrangement when it's all working. So, and so very important to the downtown river development, riverfront development. Because I don't know if you remember back then, the downtown river would be empty half the time, you know? It was, it was, it was empty because the cylinders had to be worked on, and you had to let the water through the other side. So it did hamper riverfront development. I mean, the big reason, I think, that we didn't have it down there is because nobody knew where the river was going to be if we were ever going to get that fixed. So having a dependable downstream dam, I think, is a great asset to the community in that the labyrinth Weir part has worked well, and I think we've kind of now in phase two, get the rest of the side, the earthen side of it there wrapped up. I think it makes a lot of sense, and I'm very supportive of it. I think it's a, it's a big asset to the city that probably most people don't understand or see, but that's a lake. Our riverfront is actually a lake because of this labyrinth Weir dam. So anyway, I'm very supportive, and I love reliving the history of the, of what that dam has looked like.
Lisa, thank you for this report. I did do the tour. Well, I don't know if you want to call it a tour, but back I went and staff took me over there, and it was so scary for me. He said it was a beautiful waterfall effect, not to me. It was scary for me. Number one, I don't know how to swim, so, but it was scary, but I had to go and look and see what it was that staff wanted us to do and how we did it and why we were going to do it. So I felt it was contingent on me to go down there and look, and staff did a, a good, good job of taking care of me over there because I was really scared. But it is scary, someone just going up there and looking at that dam at that, at that point in time. But thank you for this report, and hopefully we'll get this done. And our dam and our lake is very important to the citizens of Waco, downtown Waco, and what issues and projects that we have for the future of downtown Waco. So this dam is very important to us, and I hope the citizens of Waco understand how important it is and that we're just not spending money, just to be spending money. This is very important to us and very important downtown Waco, to the residents of downtown Waco and East Waco as well, because my aunt, two aunts of mine lived over there, they were always getting flooded. They were always moving because of the floods before we put the dam up. So I know how important it is for us to have a good working dam, and I appreciate your report, Mr. Vascas, and I don't know if I can-
And Dr. Harris.
Yes.
No, Dr. Girkas.
Girkas, there's-
I wasn't sure that I could pronounce that name.
Wait, I missed one.
Yes. But thank you for that report, and it is a very important project that we have to take on.
Girkas, Harris, there we go. Hi, thank you again for the report. Thank you for walking us through this process as it pertains to how we protect our assets. Question, to not turn the whole fruit basket over, so if what was accomplished in 2005 with the Weir Dam was what we could afford at the time, stewardship, and we did an earthen, earthen dam because that's, again, what we could afford, is this, is making the adjustments that we're making here that are proposed here sustainable for long term? Or should we look at what, do we just do the whole Weir Dam like we were supposed to? Is this the right solution?
Yeah, no, this piece of the project addresses a specific issue on that embankment.
Just in that embankment?
Hydraulically, your dam is performing as expected back in 2005, what the city's goals were. It's keeping up the lake, it's releasing the water correctly. The hydraulic piece of the dam is functioning fine. It's really just the stability of this area that just needs to be addressed.
Awesome. And, and these things would accomplish that till where the, the future generations are future, you know, will not have to worry and staff won't be up at night about the sustainability of this.
Correct.
Okay, awesome.
I'm sure if there is a flood that comes, they will probably still be awake looking at this structure.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, because all the, all manner of things and flood is a, is the, the F-bomb right now, um, around, uh, that we're dealing with. And so, um, eliminating some of those concerns is of grave importance. I know specifically when we're talking about this, this portion of the city, District 1 and District 2. So I appreciate that.
Uh, I, I think everything's been said. This is so important to our community and our city. And I look forward to seeing this move forward. Um, and just want to thank everybody inside and outside of our, um, city staff for their hard work on this and appreciate seeing this move forward.
Thank you. And, you know, as a dam engineer, this structure that you guys have is rather unique. And you cannot imagine how much attention we have gotten over this project. And the engineering that went to it hydraulically actually improved the profession of dam safety in the United States. We did some stuff in this project that really moved the needle for dam safety overall. So a lot of people look at your dam for various reasons, Google Earth and all that. And we get a call, why is going on on this part or that part? So you got something really unique in your city, so.
Many things. I was like, many things.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Feel like there needs to be like hype music as Bradley comes down with. And now.
Nick, where'd you want to be? You're the star.
I know.
All right. Well, council, thanks for allowing us a few minutes to talk budget. Um, at the last meeting, we passed the proverbial baton from the manager's office to you as you deliberate next year's, um, all-important budget, which is sitting over to my left. Quite an extensive document. Today, we're going to talk around three to four issues, um, including, um, our employee benefits, additions and modifications. Missy Pachowski, our director of HR is going to handle that. And the balance of our time will be led by Nick Sarpy, our, um, finance director, who'll be covering property tax rate, um, as well as calendar and outside agencies. And then I may be missing one topic, but he'll, I'm sure he'll get back around to it if I did. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to them to walk us through some slides and I will, um, I'll kind of pop in and out of the conversation as needed.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley said, we're here to talk about the submitted budget and specifically talk about property taxes, outside agencies, benefit changes and the calendar. So the property tax budget, we'll jump into that first. Um, so the current budget is about $77 million in general fund. Um, and assumes a rate of, um, 76 cents, which is about a quarter cent reduction from the current rate that's in effect right now. And assumes a collection rate of about 98%. So this slide shows the historical collection rate for property taxes. Um, and it's from 2012 through 2021. Um, this is all within the ANO Conference of Financial Report. So, um, average collection over that 10-year span is about 99%. Um, it goes up and down, but it stays within a fairly small margin as far as percentage goes. Um, so this slide just shows a perspective of sales tax revenue as a percent of future budgets and where they lie. Typically, it's somewhere between 90% or so. And the reason why we're showing all this data is because it's been brought up that there was a request for reduction, for the reduction in the tax rate. And so, um, and to compensate that with an increase in sales tax. So this is just giving you some perspective of where sales tax historically has been based off of our projections for one year or the actuals for a particular year and the next year's proceeding budget. All right, so, um, if council wants to further reduce the property tax rate, we would recommend reducing it to about 76%, 76 cents even from the current rate. Um, and in order to do this, we would increase the collection rates from 98%, which is what it's submitted as right now, to 99%, which is the historical average. Increase the sales tax revenue budget, um, as well as reduce fuel costs in light of the recent changes in prices.
Nick, do you mind just on each of these? Because I think it's important for our council and me and the public to make sure that I'm understanding this perfectly clearly. So when you say increasing the property tax collection rate to a historical, just kind, can you just kind of break in each of those down a little bit more?
Sure. So, um, as the previous slide showed, um, over the last 10 years, on average, we've collected about 99% of our, um, tax levy each year during the first year of collection. Um, it gets a little bit higher when you factor in all the future years after a levy year. Um, so what we had originally based the budget off of was about 98%.
I see.
So we would increase it by 1% the collection rate. Um, and so the reason that has an impact on the general fund is it reduces the debt rate. Um, because you don't need, you're not trying to compensate as much for people not paying their taxes, lawsuits, all those things that happen related to taxes. And so by that 1% increase, you're able to compensate a little bit for, on the M and O side, so the operations and maintenance, which is a general fund. Um, so that would be that impact there. Um, it doesn't cover the whole increase, decrease in the rate from what we've proposed to what we're recommending here.
That's one source.
That's one source. And then layering on top of that, you'd add an increase in the sales tax revenue to get it kind of back up to the consistent historical average of around 90-ish percent. Um, it's slightly below that based on our projections for the year. Um, because for the current year, we're protecting sales tax revenue around $52 million. And so our budget for next year is slightly under.
What do you think will hit this year?
Around 52.
You think we'll hit 52 in your budget, what you want to budget, and you want to budget what?
So our current budget as we, as was submitted is a slightly less than 47 million.
Okay.
Um, so part of this, the delta would be covered by increasing the sales tax to get into the historical realm of around 90%, um, lower than the current year's collection for a sales tax budget. We typically don't match it one for one just because, one, of timing and two, sales tax is very volatile from year in, year out. Um, and then the third piece to cover the delta is adjusting the fuel budget. So right now, we've budgeted fuel based off of the information we had at the time, which was around June-ish timeframe. And so since then, prices have come down significantly. Um, so there is some wiggle room there to compensate for the rest of the movement in the rate. And so none of these changes would impact any of the projects that were in the proposed budget. Um, and it wouldn't have any impact on employees' compensation or their benefits. All right, so switching gears a little bit.
Do we want to talk about that for a second?
Yeah, I was, I didn't know whether to wait till the end or stop on the slide. I, I, I wholeheartedly support this concept. Uh, uh, when I had the baton, one thing I asked, uh, the, uh, staff to do is go back and see if we could find a way to maybe, uh, I want to preserve everything we have in the budget. And I'm so appreciative of staff's work on, uh, looking at this council's strategic goals and really ambitiously addressing each one in a, in a very holistic way. And I, I'm, I'm tempted to go through all the great things this budget includes, but I don't do that. Uh, but I, I was, challenged staff a little bit to see if we could tweak our revenue sources just a little bit to get our tax rate down by the, the 1%. Uh, we went a little over 1% last year. And if we get our tax rate down, uh, 1% off the tax rate this year again, I think it, it sends a nice signal to the community. Um, we'd, we'd, uh, the first budget had a 0.33 and I think this kind of triples that to, to the 1%, to get it back, uh, down there. Um, we've had a very, uh, aggressive, I'll say exemption profile, uh, which I, which I appreciate. And I don't want to lose sight of that as we talk about lowering the tax rate slightly. Because that, uh, you know, we took, we took homestead owners from 10% to 15% on the exemption and, um, over 65 citizens from 5,000 to 50,000, uh, in their, uh, homestead exemption. So I think that was admirable that we, uh, approached that, uh, that issue. And, and I like the idea of, that helped homeowners, I think, another slight, uh, reduction in tax rate helps the commercial, uh, property owners in the multifamily, the commercial real estate, the industrial manufacturing folks as well that have seen an increase in their, uh, in their, uh, real estate values year over year. Um, and, and also, and again, I'm such a fan of what you've, what staff has done on this budget, particularly in the context of these improving real estate values. And the splash on the front end was, you know, 30% increase in real estate values. Well, it really wasn't 30% in the city of Waco. Uh, and then it said, well, it's kind of 20%. And upon further, you know, inspection, uh, after exemptions, it's only 10%. Uh, and so I, I understand the needles we're threading here with that. 10% is great, but we also are dealing with inflation, we're dealing with supply chain issues, cost of materials, cost of services, workforce, the need to compensate workforce accordingly. So, uh, but again, I, I am in favor of, uh, this slight movement in the tax rate decrease. Really, as we talk about the new revenue sources that we're putting on, stormwater fees, impact fees, uh, and as we're kind of transitioning somewhat to, to user fees and taking that back out of general fund. Uh, and I appreciate how staff has, uh, over the last three or four years, uh, improved our reserve profile, uh, where our, uh, general fund right now is, it used to be 18%. Now it's at 28%. From a balance sheet perspective, we're in really good shape. Our other utility funds also are showing strong reserves. Uh, and this positive trend that we're seeing in sales tax. I know that we have to be careful because that can be a very volatile number and we saw some of that in COVID and as we emerged last, uh, last year. But I still think we're in a spot here where we got a pretty pad there, uh, for this year. But I, I understand the, the initial budget not having, uh, a huge number in there. So I, uh, if we're able just to marginally cut that and show the directional 1%, uh, I am totally in, in favor of, of that.
I, I, I think that, you know, we're weighing a lot here. And what I feel really thankful for is, you know, staff's ability to, again, I think Jim used the word, dug the needle, I think, you know, weighing on the scales, the rising cost of our projects, taking care of our employees and continuing to deliver high customer service, um, to our citizens and, um, accomplish the goals of this council and weighing that against costs going up for our residents. Um, and, uh, trying to ensure that we're stewarding our tax dollars well and carefully. Um, and so, uh, I, you know, when I see this, if we're able to, um, uh, maintain conservative budgeting practices, but make these tweaks and still accomplish our proposed projects and not have an impact to employee compensation or benefits proposed in the manager's budget, as I'm just reading off the slide here, I, I'm okay with it. Um, but I think that, um, because I think it, it is impactful to our residents to know that we're being thoughtful about this. Um, one thing I would ask for is a, you know, in the ne, in the next budget cycle, if we do, uh, adopt this rate in the next budget cycle, um, a real deep dive at kind of the, when you pull the lever of decreasing, um, the property tax rate, what does that do comprehensively in the long term? Um, if staff is okay with this for this year, then I, then I certainly am because of the reasons outlined on, on this slide. Uh, but I, I think it's important for me to kind of know, kind of in the long-term impact, what is, uh, what is this, this mean, um, uh, for, for future years? And, um, so, uh, I, you know, I think as the dust settles after this budget cycle somewhere in, in November, I'll be, I would like that information, I think, or a discussion on that. Um, but just to echo what, um, what Holmes has said, you know, this is a, you know, it's a really, um, challenging, um, audacious feat to put together a budget like this. Um, and, uh, I know that we're not talking about all the stuff, the cool stuff that's going to be done through this budget this year. But, um, one part of that is, is being thoughtful about these matters. And I appreciate the staff's work to, to weigh that out, thread that needle, et cetera.
Um, so yes and yes, um, to the statements that have already been made. Um, again, this will be a, I know that when we had our initial budget retreat, we did talk about, we did talk about COLA, we talked about the adjustment. And I'm curious, um, if a, even a moderate percentage increase, where would that put us in, in this budget cycle? Um, or, or how would it adjust the rate reduction that, uh, is potentially proposed in this 1% rate reduction? Which, I mean, again, it, it's, it's, it's just, it's good stewardship is what it is. I mean, if we don't have to do things a particular way and, you know, the willingness of our budget team and city management team, um, and council to deep dive into the house and wise of the things we do and how we, our job is to be good stewards of our city and our citizens' money. Um, but, you know, we are fiscally conservative and for the better because then we can afford weir dams and things like that. Um, but, um, the people who make our city and help our city, um, you know, need to be considered in this as well. And, and it's been quite some time since we've done it. So I know you have sharpened your pencils to the erasers. But can we sharpen one more time and see potentially what can happen with the cost of living adjustment for our retirees?
Uh, I'm going to put Nick on the spot and, um,
I like him.
I know we, we went back in during the break, looked at, um, what we'd shown to the council related to the cost of living adjustments, thanks to the speaker, a little while ago. I'm going to let him speak to what the smallest option might be in terms of the cost of the general fund. Because it is, it is larger than the rate reduction that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let him speak to that and then take y'all's questions or commentary related to the COLA. And we're likely to have to follow back up with you at the budget audit next week with answers to any other questions. So Nick, you want to, um, speak for a moment about what the, I think it was the 70% COLA move that was the least impactful to us? Um, do you recall what, what that cost was of the general fund?
Sure. So just to remind you of the conversation we had at the budget retreat, um, there were several different options that were presented. And so since that budget retreat, TMRS has finished their actuarial study based on the 1231, um, 2021, um, funding levels for the fund. Um, and so for the city's, um, account, we're at about 90% funding level. And so the percentages that were presented in that budget retreat have slightly changed on what the impacts would be for the various options. So as Bradley said, there's basically four different options that they presented to us. Um, the first one is just a one-time 70% COLA. Um, and then there's three different repeating COLAs, a 70%, a 50% and a 30% repeating. Once you get into repeating, the costs become more significant for those. Um, and so the other piece I'll add is what we budget for TMRS. So currently, we budget at 14, or 15%, sorry. And our required contribution is in the upper 13% range. And so we've been slowly paying down our unfunded actuarial liability for the, for TMRS, um, which has provided us with that 90% funding level. So in order to do just the 70% would result in a 2.82% increase in our contribution, which suggests the general fund equates to roughly $2.2 million. And that's just general fund employees only. The impact on general fund would actually be larger because of those other funds that the general fund supports. So for all funds, the total is about $3.3 million.
And that's annually?
That's just for.
Or just the one time? That's the one time?
That's a one-time COLA. That's a one-time COLA, the 70%. If you talk about like a 70% repeating, those numbers jump up to $8.3 million for general fund or 12.8 million across all funds.
We'll prepare a, kind of a memo in advance of the budget audit next week so the council can have a little time to kind of look at those numbers and, and kind of sit with those. I do think we've moved to here, we're at 90% on the, on the fund is a, is a positive move that's continually moved in the right direction since I've joined the city. So glad to see that because our, our first job as we think about our retirees is ensuring the plan's viability. And certainly up there in consideration is ensuring the retirees have a, an ability to keep the roof over their head and that, and that sort of thing. So I'm really pleased to hear the 90% funding level. I think that's the highest that I've seen it since in the five years I've been here. But council, any, any questions that we can help you with in that memo that we'll provide to you ahead of budget audit? Anything that's stirring in your minds, what you, any pieces of fact or information you need to hear from us? You can mention them now or drop me an email and I'll be sure and have Nick and the team respond.
Bradley, I agree with everything that has been said up here by my colleagues. I know as a city council person, we come up here to you and say, Bradley, I need this and this and this in my district. I need this and this and this in my playground. And I know, I need this, I need that. And some by the other, you get it done and I appreciate that. But anything that we can do to help our citizens, not only in our quality of life issues, but in their finances, and we have done quite a bit, especially with the exemptions that we've come up with. I think that's, that's really great. But I also don't want to hinder the budget to the point where if I see something in my district that it's not budgeted for, but I need it done, I want us to be able to have the money there to be able to do that. So that, that's the only thing that I worry about because there's a lot of things that happen in our district that we don't plan for.
Sure.
But our citizens want it fixed. And thank goodness, you and your staff have helped us a lot in that, in that regard. So I, I agree with my council members, but also at the same time, I want to make sure that during the year, we have enough money to do with whatever comes up for us. And you don't have to rob Peter to pay Paul, you know, or have one project not be able to continue because we have to fix something else. There's a lot of construction going on in our city and, and I know our citizens see that and to them, that's our tax dollars at work and our quality of life issues are up front and up there. And y'all know how I feel about my fields and my baseball and, and all of that, y'all know that. But that being said, I want to make sure that we don't hurt anything else. I want to have enough money left for you and your staff to help us during the year if something comes up. That's the only thing, that's the only thing I'm, I'm coming up with because everything else the council members have said is, is I agree with, but that's the only thing that I worry about.
Sure. I think that also keeps the, the budget team and the manager's office up at night too. As we think about the structural imbalances that we have, our long-term view of the budget. You know, we have a, a two and a half billion dollar infrastructure backlog that y'all have provided a ton of leadership to get moving in the right direction. But just think about that, you know, we're spending $100 million a year to fix a two and a half billion dollar problem. And, you know, it's, we're, we're in an environment that those, we're going to need additional dollars if we're going to really try and fight off that infrastructure backlog. And so I think what I heard from the mayor's standpoint, and I think I agree with this, is as we build towards the next year's cycle or even in that interim time period, before we even start next year's cycle, is deep dive on some of those structural issues and just have an honest, educated look at what the impact of a continually reducing tax rate could mean down the road for projects either that we don't anticipate, like you identified, or even those that we know about but haven't allocated dollars towards. So I, I look forward to contributing to that conversation and helping us as a team come up with a strategy that, that works for our residents and businesses.
Holmes, here again, just to tie this slide off, I don't want to spend a lot more time on it, but what would the, we've already got a reduction of 33% or .2025 to take it to that 1% or .7776. What would that make the effective tax rate then? 7, 759 something, is that right?
Well, Nick and I had an arm wrestling match, Holmes, and Nick likes a round number. So 76 is what we've, we've got in front of you today. Of course, if I was called a, I'm showing you behind the curtain here. I was called, what'd you call me, Nick? When I said it needed to be 7599, what'd you call me?
A salesman.
No. I know.
Very good.
Not just a salesman, a used car salesman he called me today. But Holmes...
Hey, I used to sell used cars, don't worry about it.
Sorry, I wasn't reading that right. I was thinking that was the amount of the reduction. That's actually, we could just go to 76.
Yeah, we'd go, we'd go. We'd go level at .76 and, and that's at, at your recommendation from your finance director.
But then in whole dollars, I think we already, we had like a 300 plus, that was representing 300 plus thousand and then this additional, you'd be moving around 600,000 from the three topics or the three areas that you've suggested. And that's where I think, particularly on the sales tax, where we have some room there. We've got, we've got some cushions. So that's, I appreciate your work again on this.
And those numbers are generally approximately accurate that you're mentioning. Well, we appreciate y'all's feedback on the, on the rate. It's one of the, the more often read portions of the budget and appreciate y'all's insight. I look forward to the, the structural conversation that we'll have in the coming months as well. Nick, anything you need there in addition to what the council's mentioned? Why don't you take us through, what do you have next?
Can I make one more remark?
Oh, sure.
Nick, I want to thank you for this budget. I know it's a thick book, but it's been one of the easiest budgets that I've ever looked at in my whole tenure on the city council. So I want to thank you for doing that for us, to be able to go through there and look through the budget and really understand it and really know what's going on. So thank you for that. It was easy for me to look through at different, at different times of the day and different times of the night. When I can't sleep, I would open up that book.
Or keep you right up, either way.
Yeah, either one, one or the other, yeah.
I appreciate it and I know my team does too.
Does it not work? I can, I can help you.
Thank you. All right, so outside agencies. So this is a slide of the outside agencies that we typically talk about, the ones that have to submit applications to the city. This doesn't include all the agencies that we have contracts with that we're providing funding for. That list is a little bit longer. It is within that 1,500-page budget book and identified separately. But from these agencies, the approach this year was, for the most part, their funding levels were kept static. There are really generally three exceptions to that rule for this group. Keep Waco Beautiful because the funding comes from a source other than the general fund. That funding was budgeted by those departments at $84,000. And then the Meals on Wheels saw a $5,000 increase. And then the McLennan Community Investment Fund actually requested less money this year than last year. And so that, those are, these are the changes that we made for outside agencies. Again, mostly we kept them static from last year to this year.
There are a couple of these that you might remember. There were some one-time funding provided to, for instance, I think the, we provided a $50,000 award to the African-American Chamber for his equity fund contribution. And so as you're, as you're thinking about, oh, that might look a little low or different, Nick's point about their apples-to-apples funding levels are staying the same. We just, we made that one-time contribution to the equity fund and I think we had a little bit of contribution to Greater Waco Chamber for, what was the scholarship program that we support?
Lead.
Lead, thank you. Yeah, so there's, if you remember a certain number, that's probably why there's some variation from what you're seeing on the slide. We also, long-term, we're going to be adding at least one more organization to this slide that you already fund, but to, to create greater transparency around your outside agency funding, in future years, we'll be adding Waco Family Medicines contract as well to this list because you make a, you have a contribution agreement for services with them as well to the tune of, I don't know, it's over a million dollars.
1.2.
1.2 million dollars. So that way the public and council's tracking all of those on the same list year over year. That'll be something we add in for next year's budget.
Holmes, just the, so the public knows, you have a pretty solid system and rubric for reporting, you know, or I should say the city does or staff does. As far as, as they request these funds, there is a report that each one of these groups gives at the end of the year to say, yeah, here's what we, here's what our goals were, here's the results. And as this, as new funds are requested, there's an application kind of a responsibility loop that we, that we review. You can just speak to that for half a minute.
So depending on the organization, some of them are more frequently than that. Generally, it's quarterly, some are monthly, where they give us financial information, information about the projects that they're doing or have done for that last quarter, that the team, city manager's office, and then the various departments, as well as my team on the financial piece, review and monitor to make sure they're complying with the terms of the contract.
Thanks, Nick.
You want to transition to Missy?
Thank y'all. Well, I'm excited to share the details of a benefit revision and two benefit additions the city is proposing. These changes will continue to align with our value of investing in people and include a revision to the current longevity pay program and adding educational assistance and paid parental leave. These additions are intended to position the city to be more competitive in today's job market and to help retain our current workforce. Longevity pay rewards employees for their service and helps with our recruiting and retention efforts. The city's benefits, benefits from longevity as experienced employees who understand our services, culture and vision can provide better service to our residents. This illustration shows our current non-civil service plan alongside our recommendation for all full-time employees, which would include civil service. Longevity pay currently starts after five years of consecutive full-time service as of November 1st each year at a rate of $4 per month, per year service, up to 25 years of service. So it does max out, it doesn't increase any longer after 25 years, but the payment continues. Only full years are used in the calculation and based on our research, this dollar amount has not been adjusted for at least 25 years. Our recommendation is to reward employees earlier and to increase the payment amount. Payments would start after one year of consecutive full-time service as of November 1st each year and the payment amount would be based on a table, not a dollar amount per month, per year of service. So looking at the illustration, after one year of full-time consecutive service, an employee would receive $50 in longevity pay. After two years, $100. And after three years, it would jump to $1,000. After five years, it would move to $1,250. After 10 years, it would move to $1,500. And after 15 years, it would move to $2,000. And there, it would not grow any longer, but the payments would continue. Currently, an employee with five years of service receives $240 in longevity pay. Under the new plan, an employee with five years of service would receive $1,250 in longevity pay. We lose a large number of our employees within the first five years of employment and we would expect that this recommendation will incentivize employees to continue to serve.
As long as we're stopping on every slide, what is the delta of, or just what is the, what is the gross amount of, for our 1,500 employees? The gray part and then what is the blue part? Approximately?
Well, we did calculate it, but I don't...
We can get it, can't we? I mean...
Let me get it for, because we did like a 10-year employee, like the delta of what they would earn for 10 years under the current plan and 10 years under the proposed.
No, I was just more interested like what was this last year? If you had this different scale, what would it have been?
Councilmember, are you looking for, how much did we expend on longevity under the current versus what we project to expend on the proposed on an annual basis?
Yeah, because you're saying the grace, the great part's already in effect, right?
The gray part's in effect.
So what was that whole, what, what did we, what is all the gray added up last year?
Something about the cumulative change.
Hundred thousand, 50,000, 200,000, a million?
It's not a million. I'm going off memory, so that's a bad thing. Let us come back to you with the actual number.
But if the delta's only 30 grand, you know...
We do have the delta, it's, it's definitely six figures, but I don't believe it was seven.
Okay, thanks.
The city had an education assistance program previously that was discontinued in 2003 and we're recommending to bring it back. The goal of an education assistance program is to incentivize and to provide an opportunity for employees to continue learning, which would give them more potential for promotional opportunities, which in turn benefits the city. This program will offer employees up to $2,500 per semester, up to a total of 5,000 per year. Under current law, employers can exclude education assistance for an employee's taxable income up to $5,250 per year and that's part of what helped us land on this dollar amount. This benefit will be available to employees on a first come, first of come, first come, first served basis, depending on funding. And while researching other cities, what other cities were doing and also looking at this from an inclusive lens, we found that it was important to have a variety of options and not just a traditional four-year degree plan option for employees. So one key element in our proposed program is that employees can use this benefit for educational courses to include, but not limited to, college courses, vocational courses, GED or second language coursework. This benefit would be available to any full-time employee that has completed one year of full-time service and in the past six months has not had any performance issues. The requirement would be obtaining a CER equivalent to receive the reimbursement and there is a two-year service commitment for the employee. It was important for us to design this program to be a benefit, to be both, to be beneficial to both the employee and the city. And as an organization, we had also hoped to benefit by an expected increase in retention and helping us with attracting talent to our organization.
I think that this is, all of this is imperative. This is, it keeps us marketable, I truly believe. With the employment environment as what it is, I mean, the options are there. And so if I can, you know, enhance myself professionally, whether it be extending my education with a degree and/or certification, you know... education with a degree and/or certification, you know, some sort of course that will advance my professionalism in, in working for this organization, it's a benefit, and so I'm glad to see it reinstated.
Yeah, I agree. Good program. We had one of these at the previous job I had, and the important thing here is that two-year service commitment after they get the deal. You don't want them to say, yeah.
Thanks for, thanks for school.
Adios.
Yeah.
So I don't know if there's a clawback. Yeah, figure that out because that's an important part of it. But I agree with Councilmember Bearfield on this one. Great, both of these.
Yep, yeah, great quality of life component that uplifts not only our, our employees, who oftentimes are also our residents. So it's just a really neat, neat program.
The city also recognizes, recognizes the growing needs of our employees to balance work and their home life. In keeping with our goal of being a workplace of choice, paid parental leave will provide eligible employees with paid leave to care for and bond with a newborn, newly adopted, or newly placed child. Studies show that offering paid parental leave can increase productivity, improve employee morale, and has been successful in helping employers to attract and retain talent. Research also shows that providing parents with paid time off to care for their newborn, recently adopted, or placed children contributes to healthy growth and development of the children as well. So under our current program, employees do have to use their current leave balances. Employees do have the ability to apply. They qualify for the Family Medical Leave Act leave, which is 12 weeks. It is unpaid leave. You still have to use your, your leave balances during that time. And if a mother does not qualify for FMLA, the mother can still get leave under the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, but again, it's unpaid leave. So the new program we're proposing would be six weeks of paid parental leave to be used within the first six months of birth, adoption, or placement. There would be no waiting period. FMLA would run concurrently if applicable. This allows the employee to keep their leave balances for future use, and this benefit would be available to all full-time employees, both parents. Upon hire, spouses who are both employed by the city would be limited to a combined total of 12 weeks paid parental leave.
I'm glad you're doing that, Missy. It means a lot to take care of our employees and to know, and let the employees know that we care about them and we want them to, to stay with us and be happy while they're working with us because they're the face to our citizens. And if they're happy, the citizens are happy as well. So thank you for that. I think that's something that everybody's going to like. If they want to take advantage of it, if they don't, well, it's there.
Right.
So when determining what this benefit would be for city employees, we did a little bit of research and did some comparison with other cities. We found that most cities do offer six weeks of paid parental leave. Listed at the bottom of this chart is a list of cities that have not yet adopted a policy for paid parental leave and one that's working on develop, developing a policy for three-week benefit. Fort Worth actually rolled this out with their fiscal year '21, so they're a year into the program, and they just published an informal report, which provided a lot of really great information. In the report, it stated that of the 257 employees in Fort Worth that utilized the benefit, 187 of them were males and 70 were females. So 73% of the employees that utilized the benefit were males. It also stated that the citywide average amount of paid parental leave usage was 4.2 weeks. And so this is our first time implementing a benefit like this, and so we're proposing to start and introduce the benefit to our workforce, and we can always learn and watch how it's utilized if we do need to make adjustments.
This is incredible, and, you know, we've watched other cities petition for this, struggle with getting this passed. And I know that, at mention of it, you know, staff went right at it, finding the research. You know, I think this was something this council wanted to do. Again, the marketability of Waco and, who I know personally, there was a hire made recently in the city and someone I knew, and they said, so do y'all pay parental leave? Because that person is, 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 is building their family, and that was important to them. And, and I said, just you wait. But this is, this is what, this is what we do. This is who we are. This is how it's, it is relevant in how we make fiscal decisions here, but that the care for of our, our staff is reflective in that. And I mean, because it's important to know that your job has your back when you're doing something that is a blessing to your life. So, bravo.
I think we have at least one employee in the room that might have benefited us at some point.
Maybe.
Hope so.
Not to be called out there, but yeah.
That was good. Well played.
For the win. I thought Nick had it. Oh, but no.
Well played.
For the win.
Do not mess with Kathy.
Next slide.
All right, so budget calendar. So as Bradley mentioned, we'll have a special budget audit committee meeting next week, and then August 30th is the big day. So we'll have the Drainage Utility Ordinance, second reading, and then the public hearing and vote on the resolution for the municipal drainage utility fee schedule revisions. This is also in conjunction for the current year, but it'll impact what's in the submitted budget as well. And then we'll have our public hearing and vote on the budget, and then the second reading on the ordinance in departments, and then lastly, the resolution on the financial management policy updates that we previously have discussed with council. And then September 6th is the vote and public hearing on the tax rate. All right, that's all we have. Any additional questions?
I believe so. Thank you, guys. Great work.
Good.
Great work. Thank you.
I'm going to introduce Roger Glick from here, and then I'll step back up to my normal spot. Roger's going to give an overview of the next work session, which relates to a public hearing that's on your agenda tonight as it relates to the municipal drainage changes. So Roger, hop on up. It looks like the mouse is not working, so use the, use the arrows. And I'm going to leave you all alone.
Okay.
Good luck.
Oh, sir.
Thank you, all. Well, I don't know what Bradley did, but the arrows aren't working either.
Oh, there you go.
And he pauses in the background.
Roger, I believe Ryan's working on it back here.
Okay.
Yeah. I've got mine over here somewhere. It is time for that.
House like this, that can listen.
And my Dr. Pepper, Alicia, Alicia, and your Dr. Pepper, too.
Twenty.
Got to hold this down.
Roger, you, you have a daunting task in front of you, sir.
Did we not get the slides loaded?
Your slides are not, yeah, they're not loaded. It's probably on my end. Would you verbally be able to give the briefing?
Yes.
To the council?
We believe in you. Mayor and council, we've, we established the drainage utility in November of 2020, and fee implementation was in October of 2021.
Can you speak, pull the microphone a little closer?
Okay.
Thank you.
Slide over a little closer. Better. So we implemented, or created the drainage utility in 20, November 2020, and we implemented the fee in October of 2021. Through almost a year of billing, we've come up with a couple of issues that have arisen, some of it to do with how the fee is assessed on certain properties. We've noticed some inequalities on how it's assessed, and so we've presented some amendments to the ordinance that would allow us to more equitably assess the fee, primarily addressing when you have multiple utility customers on one parcel, considered like a shopping center where you have a big-box retail and a small nail salon or something like that. How do you equitably assess that fee to the different utility customers? So we're proposing in cases like that, where you have multiple utility customers on a single property, to send the bill to the property owner, which would be equitable, and they can assess the fee on their tenants more equitably. The other thing we did was, in the original ordinance, it talked about assessing the fee on multifamily residences, but multifamily was not actually defined in the ordinance. So once again, we were, we said, let's address or assess the fee on the property and let the property owner bill their tenants directly. That also takes care of a situation that we ran into of, if there are vacancies on the property, then we're unable to collect the fee, so that would address that. So that's kind of an overview of what we're proposing. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions?
I believe so. Thanks. We should have slides go missing more often.
You get one slide per presentation.
All right, Bradley, do you want to move to, it is 5:09. Do you want to go to exec or do you want to?
Yeah, I think we break, give the council a minute to refresh, and then we'll, we'll allow Clint to work through his public hearings in the, in the business session.
Great, awesome.
Is, is this the time for me to brag on one of our city departments?
I think it's a great time to brag on a city department.
Okay, I, last week, I went to the zoo, and I don't know if any of you council members have gone and toured the zoo behind the scenes. How awesome that is and how world-renowned our city sta, our city zoo staff is known for the projects that they do with the orangutans. We spent a lot of time listening to, I think her name was Kate, as she explained to us how they train the apes and the orangutans to respond so they can take their blood pressure and, and blood count and all of that. I, I thought that was so fascinating and how smart those orangutans are and how they respond to our staff members. I thought that was so awesome. And we got to touch a rhinoceros.
Cool.
So that was really something for, for, for me, and, and I took my grandson with me, and we got to feed the giraffes. And the staff was just so informative and giving out all kinds of information and the names of the, the giraffes and the animals, and Timbo, our elephant, who does a lot of tricks that you think you would see at a circus, but Timbo does this at the request of her handler of our staff. It was all so awesome. And I just want to give a lot of praise and attention to our city zoo staff, Johnny Binder and his staff. It was an awesome trip for me, a tour, and it was so informative. I learned a lot of things, so I know my grandson did as well. He said he was going to his school and talk about our zoo and what he learned. And the lion that we got to see, they didn't want us to get too close to, to that one, even though she had beautiful eyes.
It is Leo season.
But I just want to thank the zoo staff for taking time to educate me and my family on that tour. And if you guys haven't done that tour, you need to do it. I highly recommend it. And I just, Bradley, I just wanted you to know that I really, really enjoyed that tour, and our staff at the zoo is awesome.
Should be proud of their, definitely appreciate the comments.
Are there any requests for future agenda items? If not, we will recess the work session.
Mayor, just a second. I did want to, it's for the minutes. It's helpful for the minutes. Councilmember Borderwood is a ride back, he's a ride back just in time for dinner.
You don't get any of it.
Did it miss too much?
Josh, if you had missed dinner, you weren't, I was not going to share this.
We will now recess the work session and reconvene regular session for executive session as read into the record by the city secretary at 5:13 PM.
Attorney briefing Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.071, possible accelerated resolution with McLennan County regarding Sandy Creek Power Plant, real property Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.072, and economic development Texas Open Meetings Act, section 551.087. We are now in executive session.